Good evening, everybody. It's 6:30 and I'd like to welcome you to the Walton Suite at Winchester Guildhall and to the meeting of the Health and Environment Policy Committee. My name is councillor Paula Ferguson and I am the chairperson of the committee. Please can I advise you that this meeting is being audio recorded and livestreamed from the council's website. In addition, a video recording of the meeting will be updated to the council's YouTube channel after the meeting. Can I remind any officers who are joining us virtually and any members of the public who are with us this evening to please turn off your cameras and reach your microphones? And officers, please, any turn the back on when you're invited to speak. I'd like to welcome, we have two members of the public who would like to speak this evening, Mr Gad and Mr Gillan, so you're both most welcome. I'd also like to welcome Chris Holloway from Winchester for Climate Change and also I would like to welcome, sorry, got to get the names right, Will Adney, Dr Tammy Sunam and Dr Svetriss, I haven't said that right, Farthardt from the Voice of Screen Lab, who will all be speaking around rejection for item nine in the agenda. Can I please ask members to speak clearly, remember to use your microphones? And can I please ask everyone to make sure that their mobile phones are off and/or on silent? I'll check my own microphone. Right, we have three important papers to look at this evening. We'll be looking at the Call Funding Grants Programme, we'll be looking at under the Carbon Neutrality Programme, Transport Policies and Actions, and then we will go on to look at the paper on a visual statement published by the British National Assembly, which also includes a report on our current initiatives of 2019. Can I ask Nancy if there are any apologies for the talking members this evening?
Yes, Chair, we've had apologies from councillors Curd and Pearson for whom councillors Brook and Cook are deputising. Thank you.
Thank you. It's nice to see you, thanks for coming to speak, and equally all the councillors who are here tonight on the committee. Do we have any declarations of interest? Councillor Warwick?
Thank you, Chair, I have two declarations of interest, one being Hampshire County councillor, executive member for climate change and sustainability, and also I'm a board observer, thanks to the crowd, and that's relevant to the grants paper later on. And finally, Chair, I need to leave at 7:15, so I'll just take my leave at that time, that's okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Warwick, and those are duly noted. Sorry, councillor Cooper?
Yes, declaration of interest for me on the issue is, although it's not mentioned in this paper, I'm a director of Unit 12 Community Organisation, that's tenants of which are mentioned in the first paper, and also director of responsible business for Capstick Solicitors, who, one of our charity partners, is Trinity Winchester, which is another organisation mentioned in the paper, so just those three.
Thank you, councillor Cooper, and again, those are both been noted in the minutes. Just coming on to Chairperson's announcements, I don't have any announcements today. If we now move on to the minutes of the last meeting, before I ask you whether you agree with this, the minutes, I did want to just check with, oh no, I'll do that at the work programme. Is everybody happy to agree with the minutes from the last meeting? Yes, agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving on then to the work programme. To the work programme for future meeting. At the last meeting, we had asked councillor Murphy, a member for the Camisom Agency, whether or not we were looking for a paper to be brought to this committee on air quality across the district, and I believe you have an update for us, councillor Murphy, particularly in light of the new recent dramatic reductions in the air quality levels, both the odds and in particular. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, we will be having a meeting with the air quality team within the next couple of months, adding the new targets from the World Health Organisation and see what we can do in Winchester District. I think it's doubtful we'll get that ambitious, but we'll certainly see what we can do and we'll bring that to the committee.
Thank you very much, councillor Murphy. I also wanted to bring the committee's attention to the fact that we, sorry, yeah, there is a new item on the December work plan, which is the Future of Waste and Recycling, so that was on our previous work plan, so just really to note that, all attention. Okay, then, we can now move on to the first paper.
Chair, I'm so sorry to interrupt, I think we skipped over public participation.
Thank you, thank you, Nancy. Yes, we do have two members, two members of the public who wanted to do public participation today. I have spoken to Mr Gad, who has indicated he would rather do his public participation before item eight, which is the item that he'd like to speak for. I also wanted to check with Mr Gillan, who I also believe would like to speak to item eight, and joins us online, whether he would like to speak now or whether he would like to speak before that item. Mr Gillan, are you with us?
Yes, I'm doing it at the same time, Mr Gad.
So you would like to speak for item eight?
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, Nancy.
Thank you, Chair.
Thanks for reminding me. Right, then, so we can now actually move on to item seven, which is our first paper this evening, which is the Call Funding Grants Programme, and I believe councillor Cleary, the cabinet member for communities and wellbeing, that you'll be introducing this paper for us this evening?
Yes, thank you very much, Chair, if I may, and once again, thank you and good evening to everyone. As you know, Winchester has a vibrant and flourishing voluntary sector supporting its communities, for which the council provides funding for service delivery through its Strategic and Priority Outcomes Fund, and the current funding cycle finishes in March 2022. Currently, there are 15 organisations located across the district in receipt of this funding that provide vital support, services and cultural experiences to our residents. We know that many of our service providers had to adapt their delivery model, working tirelessly through the pandemic, to provide support to our residents and the most vulnerable in the district. Unfortunately, pressures on the council's financial position leave us in a situation where we need to accommodate a 20% reduction in our budget, and within this paper, we have suggested an approach for consideration. So the objective of this paper is, as the purpose states, to acknowledge the achievements and successes of the current funding programmes, detail refurbished principles and criteria for the next round in line with the current council priorities, consider the options and implications for making a 20% reduction to the funds. Bearing this information in mind, we invite you to comment on our proposals. No need to continue with three-year funding agreements, as this will provide stability to organisations, but obviously depending on the council's confirmed budget, to comment on the proposed refreshed funding priorities in Appendix One, and to consider and comment on our suggested approach to accommodate the 20% budget reduction which we've been asked to achieve as part of our contribution to insisting with balancing the council's budget. In light of these proposals, I would like to say, and we all know, that the council values greatly the contribution by the voluntary sector and welcomes the complementary support provided by these organisations, which enables us to extend the statutory services that we as a council deliver. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Cleary. Mr Robbins, did you want to add anything by way of introduction?
Not at this time, but I'm very happy to help with questions, thank you.
Thank you very much. And also, I believe we have Miss Fletcher online virtually.
That's right, Chair.
Thank you. So you're very welcome as well, Melissa. Before I ask about any questions from before, I have been contacted by email by a number of organisations, asking if the practice was able to spend a little bit more about how the strategic partners, once you receive the strategic funding, are actually invited to bid for that funding? I don't know who would like to take that. Mr Robbins?
Yes, certainly, thank you, Chair. We would follow the same process that we had at the beginning of the three-year round that's just about to end, and that was to meet and have a constructive dialogue with each of those strategic partners individually. It included a number of representatives from them and from the council, and we talked through their business needs, their business plans, we explained our financial position, and it was a negotiated conversation, and we anticipate that, subject to the conversations this evening and going forward, that they will take place in the next couple of months.
And just a supplementary on that, so I think the question I was being asked was, how do you become a strategic partner, if you want already one?
We do not offer currently an open competition to become a strategic partner, I think where people would have to be in a unique position within the community, solely operating and delivering their services, so we have had those strategic partnerships for a number of years. I would imagine if there are organisations that feel that they fulfil that criteria, they may need to contact me and we can discuss that.
Thank you very much. So we're now moving to open the floor to questions. Can I please ask members to make this a question in the last session, and if they have broader comments to make, to lead this debate, we have tend to be sometimes to introduce with several paragraphs before we get to our questions, so if we could, questions first and then leave those comments for debate. Does anybody have any questions they'd like to ask? Councillor Westwood?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to understand if other options have been explored to maintain the funding level of grants and still balance the budget by being other areas of expenditure within the council.
Mrs Ferguson and I'm obviously, you're most welcome, like, with us this evening. Would you like to take this?
Yes, Chair, certainly the cabinet considered a whole range of options as part of balancing the budget for the current year, and that included making identified savings of £2.4 million, so this was just one of the, one of many contributions towards the target that they had to achieve. So it did, it ranged from some service changes that generated income, it ranged from cost-cutting exercises, we did have to reduce the staff, we established a 20 staff as well, so it was a wide range of measures, and a 20% reduction in the grant programme was considered as part of that package, a lesser reduction, greater reduction was also considered, but that was the decision made back in February when the budget was set, when the current budget was set. Just taking that forward, the cabinet will be considering further budget options for next year. Any kind of objection?
Do you want a supplementary, councillor Westwood, or are you not going to?
I would, Chris, as Chair. The sum of money we're talking about in this paper is considerably smaller than £2.4 million, but it has a significant impact on a range of organisations that bring value for services. So my, my question is really directed at the prioritisation of these cards, and perhaps prioritisation for this could be assessed slightly higher than it clearly has been to maintain the levels of service that these organisations are doing. So the question is, has the priority, could the prioritisation be viewed?
Chair, that would be for the administration to determine, they clearly did consider that prioritisation as part of that process, and considered it very clearly, and the impact it would have on both organisations and the services to the community as well, but it is, it would be the cabinet to determine whether or not they consider that priority to need removed.
Thank you, Mr Ferguson. Councillor Brook?
Thank you, Chair. Looking at the other options considered or rejected, you considered awarding grants on an annual basis instead of a three-yearly basis, and I understand why you haven't for that certainty, but of course in two years' time, we may be in a far different position financially, being as this has been an exceptional time, so I wondered if there could be a caveat put in there that this is the guaranteed amount over those three years, but we will review it to see if we can increase it, because of course in real terms, 20% in three years' time is considerably more than a 20% reduction. So I just wondered if there's like a halfway house option of, so we will say this is what we commit to over the next three years, but we will review it in a year's time, because actually if we're in a better position, we could consider increasing that.
Mr Ferguson, do you want to comment on that?
There is always potential to review it on an annual basis, we have a medium-term financial strategy, but it is reviewed annually, so I'm happy to feed that back as part of that budget process.
Susan, I just wanted to add that within the contracting and grant law process that we have with the organisations, they are reviewed each year, so the contractors' building will be viewpoint and annually.
So councillor Cooper, you're next.
Thank you, Chair. Just a question about the engagement with the community and charity organisations mentioned here. I think one of the difficult things is understanding exactly what impacts it will have, relatively speaking, on each of these organisations to have this cut, and it makes a decision for the ultimate decision-makers on this quite difficult, we don't have that information. These organisations save the local authorities, the public sector, the NHS, just so much money by the work they're doing, and so there's a slight false economy risk, so I'll get to debate when I get there, in making these cuts. So the question is, are we able to get some direct engagements, representations from these organisations to the impact of these cuts?
Who would like to take that? Susan?
Thank you. We will talk to our strategic partners about that impact, that we do have those conversations with them, and with regard to the Priority Outcomes Fund, that is an open competition fund, so each organisation needs to rebid in, so it's not a sort of opportunity necessarily to say that these organisations will get money again, it is a reset, new organisations could come in, et cetera. So I think within strategic partners, we could have that conversation, but the priority fund is much more of a competitive situation to allow new organisations to come in.
Mr Lincoln, did you want to add something?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. What I was going to add was, I would, we haven't yet kind of agreed detail of how exactly that application process would be set out and what information we would ask, but I certainly think in light of the approach of having to take an induced budget, one of the questions that we would ask with applicants is the sort of amount of money they're going to report from us, but also for them to explain if they were, if they were to receive a grant of a lesser amount, what impact that would have. We clearly, they couldn't specify exactly until they know how much it would be, but to give us an indication of what that would, what the impact would be if they had less money, what services would be possible, whether that meant that the cost to clients went up, so I think, I think we would tease out some of that information in the application process.
Do we have more questions? Councillor Mooreson?
Councillor Ferguson, can I, can I just add something to that?
Yes, of course, Melissa, sorry, I didn't spot your mystery.
I was sort of waving, but what I was going to say was that Steve's right, in terms of when, when organisations apply to us, and we do this anyway, we've always done this, so if we offer them a lesser amount, we talk to them about what services they could deliver for the amount of money that we actually give them, so we do give them that opportunity if there is, there is a lesser grant amount available, so I understand what you're saying, but we do, we do that, so and we would continue that going forward, make sure that they can provide a good enough level of service with the amount of money that we're able to provide them with.
Thank you very much, Melissa. Councillor Mooreson?
Thank you, Chair. I note on, in the section on prioritisation, page 144, in the mental health section, there is an outcome that is expected, which, you know, weekly says, target young girls, in relation to funding for support. I wonder what work has been done to understand the consequent impact on supporting young men and boys in the same age group?
Who would like to respond to that? It's, Mr Robbins?
I'm just doing this, actually.
Oh, sorry, I meant they, I think your hand went up.
Yeah, anyways, I put my hand up because I did quite a lot of the research when we did the initial set of data, and what we found was with the initial set of data that actually it was the girls' provision that was actually lacking, so it isn't that we would preclude the, the male side, it was just that there was a little bit of a lacking in terms of the female side, so actually, we, we put that in there as a recommendation because we were looking for some more services that were around the female side, so it wasn't that we were precluding the, the male side at all, it was just that the statistics were lower on the female side in the district.
Councillor Mooreson, do you want a supplementary, or are you?
I'll ask a supplementary. So how confident are you that the data sources that you use are actually capturing the hidden issues that we can get with boys who model things up and, and don't present in quite the same way as young women?
So we would, so that kind of data, we would go back to the organisations that we, that we fund to find out that information, so that data was from the NHS, I believe, when we, when we first did the data run, but, but we, but from a service user perspective, that's something that we would go to our, the organisations we fund, like the youth counselling, to find out if there's anything additional we can help with that kind of thing. We don't, we just look at the, the basic data when we're looking at the outcome, so like I say, that was a recommendation, it wasn't a, it wasn't a requirement, as it were.
Councillor Brook, do you have a question?
I do, thank you, Chair. You refer to data and how you capture it. When was this data captured?
No, that was a data review, so we looked, we reviewed the data sets in order to set the priorities, I think that's, I think that's where the confusion is, so these are data sets that we look at in order to inform the priorities. So the data capture would be by the organisations who actually provide the service, that the data that we looked at was data that, from the NHS and the, you know, the census data, et cetera, that kind of things, what we looked at to benchmark those priorities against our council plan priorities. But it's not about us capturing it, it was about the kind of the things that we were looking for in terms of our priorities.
Councillor Coe, do you want a supplementary?
Yes, if I may, Chair. I'm a tad confused on, you refer to the word census, so censors are not done every year, so how up to date is the information that you're working on?
So I think, just to, just to clarify, I think what we're talking about here is the priorities and the, what we would be looking to fund. So we, we put together the council plan priorities and we looked at some supplementary data alongside that, so like the census, like the NHS data, like some information from citizens' advice, there was a whole range of data that we looked that supplemented the priorities that we, the council plan priorities, so just to complement the kind of things that we do and the, and the areas of, that we lack in the, in the district, which, which we think that we could encourage organisations to apply against. So it was just, it was just data across many different areas. I think at the bottom of the document, it tells you exactly which, which areas that we looked at. So this isn't data that we've captured, this is data that we've reviewed against our council plan priorities, which we will use to, to encourage people to apply against our priorities.
Thank you, Melissa. And please, councillor Brook, can you?
Yes, please, Chair. Please come back to the targeting young girls piece as well. I wholeheartedly agree that young girls tend to be higher service users of the mental health services, but that is because they are more active at coming forwards and engaging. 75% of all suicides under 25 are men, and that is because they don't come forwards and speak, so I think to say that priority is targeting young girls, there's an awful lot of work behind the scenes to try and encourage boys to speak out, because they, they are statistically at greater risk of suicide, and the suicides they commit are more violent, suicides more final, and so I just wondered if that could just be reviewed in light of that, Samaritans have some amazing data on that, thank you.
I think, Melissa and Sue, are you happy to look back on the comments made by the committee members today?
Yes, Sue, you will take that away and look at that, yeah? Thank you.
Councillor Warwick?
Yes, Chair.
I can see from our strategic partners, they're quite Winchester-centric, can we be reassured that these grants are distributed fairly across the whole district and not just based in Winchester City? Thank you.
Yes, Susan? Yes, whilst the organisations are known in the city, we require them to profile their beneficiaries from across the district, so we expect the services to be delivered across the district, and sometimes people do travel into town to access the services because that's where they're based, but we very much do spread the service delivery across the district and they are quite important.
I know councillor Cooper, you're in the question, but I just wanted to ask on some of my name. I know in the paper that you also mentioned a difference between the two different grant elements, and I'm slightly concerned that whereas in 2019, the priorities grants were getting just under £75,000, and poses that there will only be £40,000 allocated to that, at the grants, this is under 2.13 in the report, previously we were supporting 11 organisations, I think, were given those grants. Obviously, if that money is reduced quite substantially, that's going to be a tension of fewer organisations. So I have two questions. One, if you could say a little bit more about quite how you come to that adjustment in terms of percentages, whether it could be the similar percentages before, and I know you've spoken about how that would affect our strategic partners, but also if you could say something about whether there are additional funding streams that those organisations may be able to access in addition to this funding stream? So two questions then, please.
Yeah, thank you. With regard to the reduction in the priority fund, that had been reducing over a period anyway, so that had, so it's not from the 75%, start, £75,000 starting point. We do actually explain that the split is very similar, I think previously it was 89% strategic, 11% priority, and we've adjusted it to 91.9%, so it is relatively close, but the reason for, clearly the larger the sum, the percentage change is different from when it's smaller, so I think that is the reason why that's looking like it is, but I do tell you, when it is a smaller amount, to be able to manage fewer organisations, due to that due to that point. And, and but we do work with, and we would support organisations like Community First, who support the community voluntary sector, um, in their business planning, in their financial work, and helping them to access funds and, and other streams of support that they have through their wider networks.
And, um, can I just ask, are these organisations eligible to apply for our current funding?
They absolutely are, yes.
Thank you. Um, councillor, oh, sorry, Mr Lincoln wanted to add a comment.
Yeah, I was just going to add a little something in terms of the thinking around, um, ensuring that we, we didn't draw too much down on the, the large summits that the strategic, um, partners get. It's, it was certainly the case, the Covid kind of times obviously unique, um, and, and have been very different. It's, it was really apparent that those, those organisations, I mean, the, the theatre clearly was shut and there was a whole different thing going on there. But the other three organisations were absolutely fundamental. That's not to say some of the, some of the priority organisations were, but those three organisations were absolutely fundamental in, in some of the support that was given to some of the most vulnerable people during that time. And I think that was, that was part of our thinking as well, just around these, these strange times have really reinforced the, the value of those organisations in particular. Like I say, not to say that some of the priority ones weren't the case, but, but those three in particular were. So just wanted to reference that as well.
Um, thank you, Mr Lincoln. Uh, councillor Tiber, could you just have a question?
Uh, yeah, you actually asked it, councillor Ferguson. But I'm going to pivot and, and use my question in, in any event. Um, I mean, just very briefly to check those percentages on the, on the funds. I mean, I, I mask, not my forte, so I do apologise as far, but I think as a percentage, priority outcome fund is more significantly hit than the strategic fund. I do question whether that's entirely fair. And leading that lead necessarily on to the next question, which is, um, is, is there another way of assessing how these, how these funds are allocated in so far as there will be organisations here that are far more reliant on the funds than others that have potential, have a very good experience? No way, shape, or form, I suggest none of these services are really vital. I know many of them, I know how vital they are. Um, but it's looking at the ones which may not necessarily have another option. Um, you know, off the top of the head list here, the, um, CAB, for example, is not going to be able to find, is very likely to be able to find that revenue stream other than grant funding. Um, the place the crowd may well, may well do, albeit the place the crowds obviously had significant difficulties due to the pandemic. And so entirely take Mr Lincoln's point on that. But so the question is really, is there a way of, a way of taking that into account, I suppose, when you make decisions?
Um, yes, we do take that into account. We ask the financial position of the organisations and how reliant they are on our grant or other funding income and, or other sources of money that they might draw down. I think that's why those organisations that you've highlighted are in the strategic group, because they do play a special role, um, within the community as well. Um, so we absolutely do take that into account as to whether or not, um, they have other funding. And that is partly goes into conversation that says they might never live there.
Um, are you happy, councillor Figueroa, with my?
Very, very supplementary. Sorry, very supplementary. And I, we just add that some of those organisations, which the young care, which Australia, which the youth counselling, they'll, I think, struggle to find, far potentially fundraising and alternative sources of, like, grants for them. So I wouldn't necessarily say that the ones just in the strategic fund are, um, just
We, we do ask the same question with the organisations as well. But as I do repeat, that is a competitive fund. So it's not a guarantee that those organisations will get the money again. New organisations might come forward and so that is part of the process of allowing new organisations to come to the fore. Uh, but they are highly, you know, they're completely entitled to apply again for the money for the next three years.
Um, thank you, thank you very much. Uh, councillor Westwood, maybe you have another question?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, in, in section two point nine, you, you said you intend to have a relationship manager assigned to each strategic fund. I'm just interested in what that relationship manager would do, how they would support that fund and what success would look like in that role.
Yep. This is, um, where the organisation would have, for example, an officer observer on their board, uh, would meet with them regularly, have conversations with them to understand the business, work with them over the course of the year. And it takes it away from our funding team, who, if you like, uh, do the, uh, the administration, the contract management, the funding agreements, et cetera. And it actually places the organisation with an officer who's responsible for that area of work. So it might be housing, or it could be, um, myself or the theatre, for example. So the people who are most knowledgeable in those areas of work would be the relationship manager. And so they build up that close working relationship with them. So I think success is about making sure that there's an ongoing dialogue and understanding how the business is doing and working with the medical courses here in a partnership arrangement.
Uh, councillor Westwood, do you have a supplementary?
A very small one, very quick. And, and that is that, that as part of our, I presume, they would also navigate even to the council for other alternative funding, et cetera, or other, um, areas of funding, which maybe not, I do think we can also.
Yes.
I think it's great, well, yeah, thank you.
And do we have any more questions before we go into debate? Um, councillor Williams, councillor Williams, did you have any questions that you might like to ask?
I did have a question, but actually councillor Westwood just asked it. So I had it there, I've just ticked it off.
Um, then, thank you, councillor Williams. Um, therefore, we're moving into debate. Who, if anyone would like to speak first? Councillor Williams?
I'll get in first. Um, I think one of the things I want to, to sort of debate was, obviously, um, one of the issues for us with the funding and the drop that is actually occurring is partly to do with the generally national funding being reduced to local authorities. And I, I suppose one of the things that concerns me, and I think I would be interested in sort of knowing, is as support from the pandemic ends, it fears that this winter and the ongoing that's going to happen with fuel crises and, you know, electric, gas, everything going up. What is there and what can we kind of do? You know, we need to be able to be seeking and hoping to get more money. And it does feel like a real issue as a local authority. You know, we're getting less, but we actually are going to be needing more. And I suppose the debate is how, you know, how do we seek that as local authorities to try and support ourselves in the ongoing, sort of, you know, few months and years?
Uh, councillor Tiber, Qipper?
Uh, it's a very good point to raise, councillor Williams. I'll, I'll give a potential answer, I think, at the end. Um, and I think that you're absolutely right. I mean, this is, uh, paper is a sort of, I suppose, a sad, uh, consequence of, um, year-on-year, some central government cuts in particular, which is leaving local authorities across the country with seven point five billion pound funding gap by twenty twenty-five. And so the pressure on the local authorities is so extreme and it cuts in every department in every way. Um, I suppose here, what we're looking at, and I think there's a real consensus in the room, is that these organisations do substantial work in the community. And for a relatively small work, they offer a big bang. Um, and in that respect, I do wonder whether, given that, whether this is sort of, I suppose, one of the last funds that we should be cutting, uh, because of those more national pressures. Looking at innovative ways of finding funding is another big challenge. Uh, one of the potential answers to that challenge is whether, you know, do we, do we look to the people of which district to help? Um, is it fair to put, to put, you know, increase council tax on everybody? Or is a potential solution to do what some other authorities have done? Create a charity trust linked to the council and see voluntary contributions from people who are on the poorest shoulders to afford it? That's what has happened in, uh, in Westminster, for example, in Islington. Um, it could, we could be an innovative council and look at that as a potential option here to ensure that this sort of vital funding to community organisations is maintained. It's an interesting idea and it's one that I think would be interesting to explore.
Uh, thank you, councillor Tiber, Qipper. Do you really have something to add to the debate?
No. Oh, just one minute, sorry. Councillor. Thank you. Thank you. I sit here before you all today as, as a deputy and I struggle with this amount of money and this amount as a, as a percentage that could be taken from these people. And, um, I would like to wholeheartedly agree with my fellow councillor, um, across the room here, that this is the last budget that we should be looking at. In all of the other budgets that we, we all look at in due course, we should make this the very last one that we consider as a council to make those changes and take, you know, and give them less money. So I, 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 it does concern me when you consider, that we are often reminded, um, in the press, on the radio, that, you know, Winchester is the most expensive place to stay or live, should I say? And here we are, talking about groups that actually, these organisations save Winchester city council money in a roundabout way, and they do so much good for the community. So I, I would like to say that it should be the last, the last, the very last budget that should not be cut. Thank you, Chair.
Um, thank you, councillor Cook. Uh, councillor Westwood, did you want to add something?
Do, thank you, Chair. Yes, and I agree on our article language, councillor Cook and councillor Tiber. And that's why I asked my question at the top of this meeting, this to the prioritisation given to the, whether the budget balancing can be made. And I would hope that we can look again at that prioritisation. These organisations provide significant value for the funding that we give. And, um, you know, we're at a point in the pandemic where things are going to, but things aren't going to get worse. These are the most vulnerable people who are taking the money away from. And I would just have that decision that we could, okay.
Uh, thank you, councillor Westwood. Um, the one thing I, I would like to point out is I am aware that Winchester city council is one of a diminishing number of local authorities that does actually have a core, um, grant funding strategy, um, where many other councils have totally wiped out their core grant funding. The city council has held on to it for the very reasons that have been spoken about during the debate. And I think that is important for this committee to note. It is probably with a very heavy heart that we would ever seek to cut this budget. And I very much welcome this both ends assurance, um, in response to councillor Brooks' comments, that while we might agree a three-year funding package, if all circumstances improve, then that is something that could be looked at and reviewed. Um, and certainly I'm sure there are many members of Cabinet listening today who have heard loud and clear what, what the criteria are. Um, before I fully sum up, I wondered if councillor Cleare wanted to add anything at this point?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just wanted to say that this paper actually gives you a bit of a heavy heart because we all know, not just Winchester, but all around the district, there's marvellous people out there doing marvellous things. And it's really come to the front during the pandemic. So I for one, and I know I'm on Cabinet, and I have my fellow Cabinet members here, but I for one, and I've taken on board all your comments, I'm going to do my darlings to try and keep the money coming. So sorry, Richard, but I am. And I thank all the members here this evening and the officers that have been working on this for your comments and your input. And we try to do our very best for you. Thank you, Chair.
Uh, thank you, councillor Cleare. Uh, councillor Tiber, I'm very keen to finish this paper on the smallest of comments.
It's the smallest, I think it's quite important, but it is important to note that and, and the officers here and elsewhere across the council, I know for a fact, care deeply about a lot of these organisations and do brilliant work, the anything of them. I just want to say thank you and commend them. And in no way, shape or form should the sort of challenge on this paper should be interpreted as a, you know, any source criticism then, they do an absolutely stellar job. Uh, so I just wanted to make that clear.
Uh, thank you, councillor Tiber. I think on this occasion, you've taken the words out of my mouth.
Oh, my goodness.
Um, so I would like to, um, thank the officers involved in producing the report for us today, and especially, um, Miss Robinson, Miss Lincoln, and, uh, Miss the collection. Um, I would also like to thank, how so clear is the Cabinet member, communities of work there. I think we have had a good discussion. I think we have made a good input. I know that our comments will be noted in the minutes and we have assurance through Cabinet members that they will be taken on board. Um, we were asked to acknowledge the work that has been done with the funding previously, and it's clear for this paper just how much good in the community that funding has provided. Um, it is also clear that our communities face challenging times ahead. Um, we have the end of furlough today. We have the removal of the uplifting universal credit today, or tomorrow. Um, we also have, um, the continuing pressures and the resolution of foundations suggesting there will be increased unemployment in a report today. So we know our most disadvantaged communities are going to come under pressure. So the work that the council's doing, the communities team does with organisations to support the most vulnerable is even more vital now than it has ever been. Um, and while the council should be applauded for still having core funding, there is that challenge about, is this the time to cut? Could it be delayed? And I think that challenge is legitimate. Um, I am pleased to see that there was focus on the most disadvantaged. I'm also pleased to see that there is focus on mental health. And I'm glad the officers of the committee to take into account the concerns around the focus on young girls and to look at perhaps a broader spectrum, given that balls can present in a certain way. Um, thank you very much. If you're all happy to, I'd like to move on to the next item. Great, thank you. So we are now on item eight, I believe. Um, and we have, um, two members of the public who would like to speak. Um, Miss McGead and Mr Gillan, do you have a preference on who would like to go first? No, Mr Gaddis, um, shaking his head. So perhaps, Mr Gillan, we could ask you to go first. Um, under public participation, you have up to three minutes to speak. Um, and, um, Nancy will be monitoring time, letting her know when that time is up. But you're speaking today on behalf of Friends of the Earth, or is it in any individual capacity?
No, it says Friends of the Earth, so, councillor Ferguson.
Uh, thank you, Mr Gillan. Would you like to, um, go ahead? If you speak clearly, then everybody will be able to hear you in the room and on the recording. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now two years into the process that began with the declaration of climate emergency by the city council. That declaration acknowledged that transport in, in particular road transport was the most important source of emissions within the district and the sector of the economy that was performing least well in reducing those emissions. The declaration also specifically aimed itself at the emissions of the whole district and not just those of the council's own estate. Of course, that was ambitious, but it must be taken at face value. For what other value can the declaration have? If it turns out to be over ambitious and proved to be beyond the capability of the council to achieve, then this will be disappointing but forgivable. The problem is that nothing so far has shown a willingness of the council to do the kind of thinking that can establish what is possible and what is needed to make the possible actual. This is a classic case for project planning. There is a stated objective with a stated timescale, what is necessary to achieve it? The council must know that such a project needs data, analysis, optioneering and a trajectory. We do not see anything like this in this report. We see miscellaneous reports which have nothing in them of relevance to carbon reduction, except that they are in the opposite direction, but which are represented as part of the plan and indicative of progress. The movement strategy does not address carbon emission. Even its laudable aim of reducing city centre traffic has now morphed into a classic highways engineers predict and provide plan. Nothing but extra carbon emission. Nothing but extra carbon emission can result from this and the parking strategy merely parrots the movement strategy. We should be asking the question, what would a future efficient transport disposition be? How can we do better for people movement or freight movement than millions of individual journeys in high embedded carbon vehicles? Then we should ask how we get from here to there and how we fund it. We need a systems approach and we must not still be at this point next year. We must have begun the steep slope of the necessary trajectory. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillum. As we move into the paper, we will make sure that we address those issues as far as possible. Mr. Gadd, would you like to go next to speak on this paper for the carbon emissions for transport?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for giving me the opportunity of saying a few words. I hope I don't repeat too much. I was really looking forward to a report that takes a critical overview of transport schemes in Winchester, assesses progress so far and further potential for reducing transport emissions, identifies how much more still needs to be done to meet the 2030 net zero target and examines all suggestions that will deliver what is required. I'm sorry to say this is not that report. It contains little detail on emissions and delays discussion on the ideas in the appendix. Transport emissions are 58% of the district total. On current trends, it will take us 100 years to reduce them to zero. It's now 845 days since the Cabinet declared a climate emergency. 20% of the timetable has now drifted by. The report I hoped for is long overdue and I really hope we can have a date for such a report soon. We cannot assume that battery electric cars will make a positive contribution. Unless we expand the national supply of green electricity sixfold, we will have to revert to generating more electricity from gas to meet the demand. Cars powered by gas-generated electricity have 72% of the emissions of diesels. The movement strategy is wrong plan for a 46% increase in traffic and an increase in parking spaces. With or without electric cars, this will inevitably raise emissions. I share the government's agenda for reducing local transport emissions. All schemes need credible and ambitious carbon reduction and mobile share targets. We need to strengthen proposals for a high-quality cycling network serving the town and satellite villages. We need to strengthen proposals for a walking network with safe routes between all major centres and a good and consistent signage system. We need to reorganise bus services, both in the town and across the district, to triple use and make sure there are good connections between buses and with trains. None of this will really work unless there is a radical reduction in traffic. I urge the council to adopt the Scottish Government target of 20% reduction by 2030 and to support the Greener Transport Solutions manifesto launched today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gadd. I also wanted to welcome, for this paper, we have Andy Hickman with us and also I believe we have Geoff Hobbs from Hampshire County Council with us virtually. So Geoff, you're very welcome too. I believe councillor Todd, you are going to introduce the paper. And just for members of the committee, Mr. Hickman informs me that there will be a presentation, a short presentation on carbon. Is that correct?
Yes, Chair, there will be. Maybe if I set up the situation. The paper makes, sets out the activities that we're currently undertaking. But one of the things it makes very clear is that when it comes to engaging with traffic issues, we work in partnership with the county council. The county council is the highways authority and takes the lead on this. And I'm very pleased to be able to say that, and the document, which will be the driving document in order to reduce carbon emissions across Hampshire from traffic, is so-called LTP4, Local Transport Plan Four, which is the new generation transport plan for Hampshire. And carbon, I can say with confidence, is absolutely placed at the heart of it. On issues like the movement strategy, we work in partnership with Hampshire and partly because we're needing to produce consistent information that we can use or bidding to government for funding. We will also be using the same methodology and approaches that they do at Hampshire, where there's no sense in running two parallel processes. What has become clear since the challenge has been given to us on the question of carbon, which was not the original objective of the movement strategy, which was very much centred around air quality, is that it does start to raise different questions. We have a huge number of people that travel long distances to get into the Winchester district every day and to get into Winchester every day. If you think about it in carbon terms, somebody drives 40 miles to get to Winchester, that's the same as 80 half-mile journeys. So the carbon, the carbon impact of long journeys is quite disproportionate and we have a lot of long journeys coming into Winchester. And that's one reason, and unfortunately we're not in a position to present the output of that work today, why Winchester and Hampshire together have put in place as a next phase study for the movement strategy, a bus plan that is looking not just at travel within the city but also longer distance journeys. It's why we have started to work actively with solid transport. And for example, we're talking to them about a mobility hub at the station, something that is also within the scope of the bus paper, looking at how we join up trains and buses to give people low carbon options for travel. And the county is also working closely with us on ideas such as, for example, a mini Holland bid. The Department for Transport has asked for expressions of interest. We are Hampshire's expression of interest, Winchester is for a mini Holland bid, which is. And we continue also to work with Hampshire and with the bus companies to see how we can move things ahead. And on that basis, as an example of the kind of initiatives we're looking at, I'm pleased to announce, and this happened after the paper, that we have agreed with Stagecoach. It's a very small carbon reduction, but we've agreed with Stagecoach as part of giving better options to get leisure centre. It will, we will be running a four-week trial of it being free to get on a park-and-ride bus and ride from the Broadway to the leisure centre and back. So that would be a free journey, you'll be able to turn up, get on the bus, ride to the leisure centre, use it, get back on the bus. The other thing we have clarified, because it has been the case for some time, but I don't think people are always aware of it, on the subject of park-and-ride transport, is that if you have any kind of bus pass, the same bus pass, not the person's bus pass, a Winchester day pass, a gold rider, a day rider, you name it, then you can also use park-and-ride buses. And we have also confirmed and agreed with Stagecoach that they will add the solid go pass and that will also be accepted on park-and-ride buses. And that means, for example, people can come in on the Blue Star with one of those passes and then get on the park-and-ride for free. Anyway. The thing I'd like to introduce that I think is really helpful is, Mr. Hobbs is very, it's very much appreciated that he's in a position to share some of the emerging thinking from Hampshire County Council on how transport and carbon are related and how that relates to the Winchester district. And I think it will provide a very good framing for the kind of work we want to do. And actually, in a lot of the things that Mr. Gillum talked about, the work that is being done to work out how to close the carbon gap is being done by Hampshire. As it says here, Hampshire LTP4 work on car transport decarbonisation. So that, that is the primary document, but we will also be actively working in partnership with them to reapply that to Winchester. We will also touch on other things that apply to the wider district on top of the bus work that is going, also the district local cycling infrastructure plan, which is all about improving cycling in the district. But it's probably best if we hear first Mr. Hobbs and he takes us through the county's approach on carbon and how we would be applying it in Winchester.
Thank you, councillor Todd. And just before you start, Mr. Hobbs, I also wanted to welcome Lucy McKeown. It's great to see you back at the city council, Lucy. I'm sorry I missed you before.
That's okay.
Do you want to take it away, Jen?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you councillor Todd for the introduction. So a slide I have before you now is a summary of where we've got to with the Local Transport Plan Four work on decarbonisation for surface transport. And as councillor Todd has mentioned, the new Local Transport Plan Four does place achieving climate neutrality by 2050 front and centre of its policy offer. Yes, so 65% of surface of transport emissions in Hampshire are caused by motor vehicles. And there is, despite the pandemic, still forecast trajectory of increasing in numbers of trips that people make on Hampshire's roads and traffic emissions are still rising. So as Mr. Gillum and Mr. Gag said, we do have a lot of work that is needed very quickly. And against that backdrop, Hampshire does have a higher proportion than the average of England for multiple car households. So we have more two-car households and more three-plus car households than many other parts of, parts of England. And it's clear from the, the UK government's Transport Decarbonisation Plan that was published in July of this year that, that national action on its own will not be enough to achieve 2050 net zero carbon. And a clear message, a takeaway from that is that rapid local action is needed. And when the Local Transport Plan Four comes out to public consultation early in the new year, it will become apparent that what, what, what the proposed approach is for that rapid local action. Obviously Hampshire County Council is the local highway authority for Hampshire, but we will need to work very, very closely with our 11 borough and district council partners because different aspects of transport fall under different tiers of local authority, as we well know. So doing nothing or doing the bare minimum is not going to be an option. There is going to be a need to, to carry out rapid local action of the sort that is set out there in the green box. So that will require trying to incentivise and encourage more people to take up electric vehicles quicker and faster than the national trajectory. So measures like promoting electric vehicle car clubs, because the high cost of purchase of an electric vehicle is likely to be a barrier to many. So if the, if, if someone could lease or, or join an electric vehicle car club, then that barrier to adopting electric vehicles, electric cars, does, that does deal with that barrier. Obviously during the pandemic, we've seen a very significant increase in working from home and many professional office workers are continuing to work from home, at least some of the time. And the pandemic has shown that office workers have been able to successfully carry on in their different professional services industries, quite successfully working from home for a large proportion of the time. So we have learnt a lot during these last difficult 18 months. There is of course a need for an increase in the levels of active travel. So that's walking, cycling and possible new emerging modes of transport like scooters, e-scooters. And there is the need to, in the Local Transport Plan, plan for living locally. So the concept of 20-minute neighbourhoods, which I'm sure many of you are familiar with, involves having the majority of local services, facilities, shops within a 20-minute walk or cycle ride of your home. So that will be a key part of achieving zero, zero transport, zero, zero carbon by 2050. But on its own, those measures won't be enough. And again, incentivising more people to use public transport or demand-responsive transport if you live in a rural area away from a busy bus route. Those measures will get you so far, but demand management will be needed according to our analysis to be able to achieve zero net carbon by 2050. So what we mean by demand management is considering the cost of parking, the availability of parking and other measures which could include workplace parking levies or emission zones or potentially some form of road user charging, which would need to be done in partnership with the national government and others. So there's, there's plenty of scope through the analysis. If we did all the things in that green box, then there is a likelihood that we will achieve net zero carbon by 2050. So as I said, more, more on this will be set out in a public consultation on the Local Transport Plan Four early in the new year. So I would encourage those within interest, including Friends of the Earth and Winnet to have a, have a look at that and I hope that you will be pleasantly surprised when, when you read that Local Transport Plan Four document. So the next slide. I will just bring that one up. Apologies first, Detective Rich. This slide that I'm about to bring up will set out a little bit more detail on the behavioural change that will be needed to achieve 2050 net carbon, net zero carbon. So in terms of various different behaviour change measures and their effectiveness in, in reducing carbon, energy use in domestic buildings, commercial buildings makes a big, big difference. Sustainable travel can, in yellow there, can make a significant difference. But in terms of the contribution of active travel and encouraging local bus use, the, the actual net contribution towards net zero of more active travel and local bus is relatively modest. So the big gains could be found from persuading people to cut air travel, work from home and adopt electric vehicles more rapidly have greater potential. But there are other very laudable policy objectives for encouraging active travel and the county council and the city council will of course be continuing to press for delivery of local walking and cycling infrastructure plan investment for other policy reasons such as air quality reasons and public health. So obviously we all know physical activity, mental wellbeing and mental health and quality of life are all improved if people exercise regularly and building walking and cycling into your everyday routines is a great way of doing that. So that's all from me. I don't know. I don't know. I think the other areas that are on other slides are things that councillor Todd has already spoken about. So I will leave it there.
Questions? Would you be prepared to take them on those two slides? Yes, but not. Does anyone have any specific questions on those two slides? Obviously, that's new information this evening. Councillor Brooke?
Thank you, Chair. I just had one. You're talking about encouraging people to work from home as part of the carbon neutrality. I just wondered what work has been done to assess, for example, during winter, if anybody's working at home or heating their individual homes. The balance of that versus heating one larger building and lots of people making smaller car journeys. I just wondered, in the carbon neutrality plan, if they sort of offset each other or if there's still a significant saving.
That is an excellent question, and unfortunately, I don't know the answer to that. But I could take that away and ask colleagues and come back to you offline, if that's okay.
Thank you, Geoff. Mr Lincoln, you wanted to make a comment?
Yeah, just a short point to add there, Chair. City Council, obviously, we moved to a very remote working approach over the last 18 months. We are expecting in the next month or so our carbon footprint report for the council, which would be for the year too, March just finished. And clearly, that will be the first of those reports which shows the impact of that move to remote working. We gathered a lot of information this year as part of that on the way that people work at home. So as an organisation, we hope to have a good idea when that report comes to us of the difference. You know, clearly, we will have a very good idea of how much our carbon emissions within Winchester, within our buildings here, is reduced. We'll have a good idea when that report comes out of the extent to which that's offset our emissions at home. So whether that will be a sort of good proxy for across the whole district, I don't know. But at least we'll get some some information on that. We should have that very shortly.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr Leitham. That will be interesting to actually see, as you say, an indicator. Just before I go to councillor Cooper. Geoff, I wondered whether you have any comment. Winchester to me seems to have a specific issue, which is many of those people who were commuting out of the district were perhaps using public transport, going up to the city, up to London. But many of the people who were coming into the district are travelling in by car. Do you think the district will benefit as much from, you know, the shift to homeworking, given that many of the people that are homeworking were the ones previously, perhaps, were going on the train or at least part of the journey on the train when we got to the station?
That's a very good question again. So obviously, there are a lot of out commuters that did travel out of Winchester District to neighbouring areas and to London, as you've said, via public transport. So we are aware that since the beginning of September, we have seen our rail operators have noticed the trains are a lot busier than than they were in the summer and before the summer holiday. So and more and more office firms that are in London are moving towards a similar sort of hybrid model of working, which will mean working from home two or three days a week and working in the office for the other remainder of days a week. So what we would hope to see from from the whole experience of the pandemic is that those that previously commuted to maybe the Thames Valley or to places like Basingstoke or Farnborough in a business park that's away from a railway station, they'll have had a positive experience of working from home. And there'll be some offsetting of those former car trips being replaced by hybrid working. And that will help achieve that benefit of greater homeworking. But more clearly needs to be done to convince certain sectors of business that that productivity doesn't suffer and and output doesn't suffer from increased homeworking. So that has been a big lesson for many employers, that they can trust their employees to be productive and do a good day's work. So that is, yeah, so while some of the reduction in travel has been public transport, not a significant chunk of it is still helped reduce car trips. And that would be what we would focus on in any behaviour change initiative.
Thank you very much, Mr Hobbs. Councillor William, was it councillor Cooper or councillor Cook?
Councillor Cook first, then councillor Cooper, then councillor Westwood, then councillor Moise and I.
Right, so councillor Cook here first.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to follow on from what Steve was referring to, Mr Lincoln, shall I say. And it's to do with the offices not being obviously utilised here in Winchester. So the carbon offsetting and how much was involved in the last financial year? And if there's been any savings, where has that money gone? So if the offices aren't being used, they weren't being lit, they weren't being utilised. What about the carbon offsetting on that? As I asked, you referred to a report, but that's not coming out yet, that the pandemic and the COVID etcetera has been longer than a year. So I wondered where we were with savings on that. Thank you, Geoff.
So the report that I mentioned would be the council's carbon footprint report for the year beginning April 2020, running through to the end of March 2021. So obviously, the start of that year was pretty consistent with the start of the pandemic. So that's the first, when we get this report, that'll be the first time that we really have any data showing the effects on carbon from the sort of change in commuting that have come as a result of the pandemic. So the report which we had from the year previous was really just reflecting, you know, the more traditional way of working with the occasion at home that staff had. But with us being very much primarily in the office, so so yeah, at the moment, we don't know really what the effect of that truly is. And we won't until we get that report.
I believe the report looks at the carbon from the offices, but also the carbon produced by people chugging into our, and perhaps Mr Bothy could come in, because the offices have never been closed during the pandemic.
Chair, we have maintained an office presence throughout the pandemic. We have obviously had a much, much lower use and predominantly no use of the Westbury building. So yes, there will be some production in heating and heating costs for that. And they were assumed as part of that same budget exercise that we referred to in the previous report. But we've yet to finalize the exact amount of savings.
Councillor Cook? If I may ask a supplementary question. So when will we see sight of those savings in that report, please? When will we see that?
So the carbon footprint report, we're still waiting for the results. They need a lot of data. So we provided them with the initial data that we sent to them. They've come back to saying that we need a bit more clarity on various points. We are bored with the detail that we need. So I would expect in the next roughly month, I would say, we'd get the first draft of that report. So yeah, because the end of the year, we should have a sort of final report.
Thank you very much, Mr Lincoln. Councillor Cooper, you have a question for Mr Hobbs?
Yes, thank you, Mr Hobbs. That's a very interesting report. There's a question around the changes to the roads that recently reopened, the ones that previously closed as a part of, seem to allow social distancing to take place. Obviously, those road changes on Hyde Street or Halls, for example, have restrictions have been lifted and the roads are for the open again. I was wondering if you had any information yet on the effect on traffic volumes as a result of that? And also effects on air pollution as a result of those changes? Whether there's been a difference between before the restrictions were lifted and after?
Thank you, councillor Cooper. So obviously, we do have monitoring that we do, we have continued to do as the pandemic restrictions have progressively been eased since the spring. So we do undertake monitoring of traffic volume and we have undertook monitoring of levels of walking and cycling whilst those measures were in place along North Wall and Hyde Street. But since the end of July, we haven't undertaken any specific pedestrian and cycle count surveys. The level of of traffic since the schools and colleges went back in September has increased. So we are now regularly back to 100% of pre-pandemic levels of traffic en route into Winchester and within the city centre. And we're still seeing some changes in the inter-peak period where those that aren't that are working from home perhaps are still maybe making additional journeys during their lunch breaks to travel into Winchester to do other things. But obviously, the removal of the restrictions hasn't isn't, it's not a causal relationship between removing restrictions and traffic increasing. There's a lot of other factors at play in terms of employers easing hybrid, moving from homeworking to hybrid working. And and the complete relaxation of many of the restrictions we were living with before the schools broke up. We're in a very different situation now from from schools returning at the beginning of September. So it's still, so I wouldn't say that that the reason traffic has increased is because North Wall and Hyde Street are now back as they were pre-pandemic. It's 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 more complicated than that.
Thank you, Mr Hobbs. I'm just going to take the two more questions we have for Mr Hobbs. And I would then like to move on to the paper itself. So is it councillor Gat, councillor Westwood and councillor Moise? Okay, so councillor Westwood, please.
Thank you, Chair. I actually had two questions, but I'll restrict myself to one. Geoff, thank you very much. It's very interesting. You referred to the need to reduce air travel and to manage not when you walked us through your slide. But we've got two significant changes going on in Hampshire to increase capacity. Firstly, the expansion to Southampton Airport. Secondly, the smart motorways across the M27 and the M3. How do both of those projects square themselves and fit with your objectives for LTP4?
So in terms of the the measures I've outlined, they focus on surface transport rather than aviation. So it's much more complicated and requires a lot more interorganisational working to make significant changes to how frequently and how far people fly. So the there is so the recent decision to lengthen the runway for Southampton Airport is something that that is on the cards. And the Smart Motorway project that's being led by National Highways, who used to be known as Highways England. So a lot of the thinking behind the Smart Motorway project is that it would alleviate congestion at certain times of day where traffic bunches and and there is there's so the technology that goes with the Smart Motorway, where you have temporary speed limits that are below the 70 mile an hour national limit on the motorway. The purpose of those is that when traffic sensors in the road detect a certain volume of traffic, they enact a sort of 50 or a 40 speed limit, which in theory smoothes out the traffic flow and leads to less accelerating left braking. And the effect of that is that traffic keeps moving and flowing more smoothly than without the Smart Motorway. So if you were to ask National Highways, they would say that that in an era of combustion engine being the norm, then smart motorways could see a reduction in traffic, a reduction in carbon emissions and NO2 and particulate matter reductions. But obviously, we can focus on in the Hampshire LTP4 on those aspects that we can control. So aviation and strategic road network are outside our gift to directly influence. Whereas the Hampshire County Council's road network and working with bus operators, rail operators, improving integration, delivering cycling, walking improvements, those are things that we can influence and we will look to influence through the LTP. So does that partially answer your question?
It partially answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Hobbs. And I think it should be noted, and perhaps Mr Gant can correct me, but when you referred to 58% of the district's emissions coming from transport, that did include the roadways. Is that correct, Mr Gant?
Yes.
Do you know what proportion of that 58% comes from the motorway?
It's about 20% of the complete footprint. But I have to say, a vast amount of all journeys taken by road are less than 25 miles. So the idea that the motorway is a conduit for very long journeys, nothing to do with Winchester, is probably not very helpful. Most of the journeys on the motorway in Winchester either start or end either in Winchester or very close.
Thank you, Mr Gant. Councillor Todd, it can be quite quick, so I do want to get.
Just one one quick point on this, which two, at least two authorities, including Winchester and Hampshire, as part of the Hampshire deal discussions, have raised the idea that the motorway network within Hampshire would be part of the Hampshire deal. And so we'll be able to start implementing local policies that make sense in terms of managing our own climate impact. Now, it's a long journey before there is a Hampshire deal, or if there ever is one. It is one of the things that several authorities in Hampshire and Winchester, or two of them, have put in scope for a potential deal.
Thank you, councillor Todd. That's very interesting. Okay, so again, can we be brief? Because we do need to get to the paper itself. So councillor Moise, thank you for waiting so patiently.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Geoff, for your presentation. I think there's some interesting and promising clues in there as to how things might go. There's an old adage in business which goes something like, if you can't measure it, you can't manage it. So my question is, what are your thoughts on one of the plans on implementing metrics and implementing KPIs that can be front and centre at the cabinet levels in Hampshire County Council and Winchester City Council and publicly available to the public to hold those authorities to account? So where are you in terms of thinking around the role of metrics and KPIs?
Thank you, councillor. So obviously, at this stage in the LTP4 development process, the focus has been very much around the set of policies and measures that you would need to be able to achieve zero carbon by 2050 from surface transport. Once we've got the public consultation underway in the new year, then we will look to further develop our monitoring and evaluation plan for the new local transport plan. And as part of that, we will look at metrics and indicators for being able to show progress against a baseline. So I wholeheartedly agree with with the sentiment of if you can't measure it, you can't manage it. So I can't say too much at this stage, but work is underway at the moment on that. And once we've got more to share, then we will.
Thank you, Mr Hobbs. And thank you, councillor Moise, for a great question. Councillor Cook, this will be the last one for Mr Hobbs, because he has been more than indulgent, I fear.
Well, actually, the question was brought to councillor Todd, if I may, if that's right. And the question is regarding Stagecoach and this four-week trial. I'm very excited about this. And the Windsor Sports and Leisure Park. And when is it going to start? And that's it. When is it going to happen?
Please, one more question. It will start on October the 18th and finish on November the 14th. We need to see how it works alongside Christmas traffic and other such things, but because the park rides tend to fill up as you get towards Christmas. But we are very excited about it as as a way of using our contracted park ride services to just actually partly partly intention is just to get people back on buses, you know, have a go, here it is, it's free. Take a bus to the leisure centre. One of the other things we've changed is the stop announcement at the leisure centre is being changed. So it says leisure centre as well as far from close, but it's still obvious otherwise.
Chair, if I may, this is not a question, this is a statement.
Would you like to leave it for the debate?
I will do so. Thank you.
Right. So thank you, Mr Hobbs, very much, both for making the presentation. I believe that was arranged at very short notice. This committee gave this paper was coming here today and for George Gillis by asking, answering all of one of our questions. It was lovely to to see you in whatever guise at some point. I hope to meet you in the flesh, rather than just on the screen. Mr Hickman, did you want to introduce the paper itself and whether in your introduction, whether your Councillor Todd would perhaps like to address the the challenge that Mr Gill made and Mr Gillan made about the nature of the paper and the fact that perhaps it hadn't met their expectations of what they were hoping to see? Thank you.
Yes, certainly. I'd just like to say, to start with, we we have got Lucy McGee on back with us. Lucy worked as a consultant previously, but we now have a full time permanent transport planner post in the authority. We have, as Councillor Todd said, we are a transport authority, so we don't have a big transport team. We have a few members of staff and Lucy's bolstered that. We're also looking to, from the Carbon Neutrality Action Plan, funding secure a sustainable transport post as well. So, you know, it just shows our commitment to this in terms of putting extra resources at a very difficult time. So we are doing that. The the report talks about the movement strategy. It also talks about some of the wider district things that have already been mentioned. In terms of the movement strategy, we did do a normal members briefing back in the summer. And the report includes a link to a summary report, a progress report on the movement strategy and on the priorities that we're now taking forward. So these things do take time to progress. But if you have a look at that report, you can see that things are moving. And there are some very exciting schemes coming through that we're working up detailed designs for as we move into the implementation stage. And it's also been said that the City Council has to work with the County Council, with our small amounts of resources, very much in terms of a joint working and influencing supporting work that the County Council does across the whole county in terms of supporting our objectives. So that's really our, that's what we try and do at the City Council with the resources that we have. As I say, we're we're moving into the delivery stage. As as we do that, we're going to start some engagement. So I'm just going to, the council have a decision day in November where they are going to agree to go out to consultation on the movement strategy. And then we'll go out and talk to the general public about key priorities, what they want to see happening first. And we'll also be talking to key groups. And I know Mr Gill and Mr Gill both mentioned the development cycle and walking networks. We need to talk to the key groups out there to make sure that what we're proposing, what we're bringing forward, that that really will make a change in the things that people who are informed want to see happening. And that's a really important process to enable us to then see government funding to deliver these things, because you have to do that engagement, you have to show public support before you can do that. We're also doing some wider district wide pieces of work as well, again, with the County Council, the the bus work that we're doing, the the district wide bus study. It's a very important piece of work as as the pandemic into recovery. And bus network starts to, well, people start to use buses. We're ready again, we want to build on that. We want to use some of our parking funding to support that work, the pump prime and the new bus services, for our parking access strategy. So this is where the strategies start to work. And we've had a year of pioneers, really, in terms of of that process, because people just haven't been using buses. But we will be working on that. The bus study will inform that process and give us the information we need to see where we should put our limited amount of money to support that work. And Lucy's also working on a district wide LCWIP local cycle and walking improvement plan. And that will have a, that's been done through the County Council. They have the expertise to do that. We're commissioning it and paying for it and we'll be supporting it. That will involve a lot of engagement with local groups, town and parish councils, in order to determine what the priorities are across a very large district. And again, that work will help to support our funding bits, for example, how we use our SIL funding to support some of the delivery of this work. And the report also sets out the progress we've made in terms of electric vehicle charging points, which we've been installing across across the district and our car parks. Hampshire County Council, we've been putting some on the street electric vehicle charging points in person as well, and some have been going into our park and ride service. So we've we've made some good progress in terms of bringing these things forward. And I think once we move into that implementation stage, and we have funding ourselves, to see some some real progress on the ground. But these things do take a while. I don't know if Councillor Todd wants to invite one of us to discuss the question.
No, thank you, Andy. That's very helpful. Yeah, I'm I'm actually on the on the question as to how stuff gets funded. That's a discussion I've been having with with Hampshire. The financial picture, as we know, for local authorities is is very tight. There is SIL funding. There are occasional Section 106 agreements on major developments. The government has announced a 2.2 billion tranche of funding for active travel. 220 million of that has been released and Hampshire has actively bid for that. We have, here in Winchester, achieved quite disproportionate support in terms of how much we've ended up getting of that funding. And this work that we're doing, the LCWIP, is all about having bid grade information and available soon. So that when the next tranche of funding comes out, we we are able to go, here is a consultant upon plan, here is a list of priorities, here are worked up feasible schemes which we know can implement. And 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 some of the SIL and Section 106 funding will need to sort of go in and say, here is the money we are contributing locally. And therefore, you should be giving us the money to really move ahead with our active travel plans. The the, you know, that's the the mini Holland is potentially, if we get it, a complete breakthrough. That is a massive amount of funding. So at the moment, we're at the level of expression of interest and that would be a much bigger project. Again, all this work that's going on, things like LCWIP, sort of cycling or being structured funds. The preparatory work is absolutely critical to unlocking the funding that enables us to implement things. So that's why the programme has looked like how it looks and why it's very important to actually get the LCWIPs out into the district. So that we're able to say, and here's the scheme, you know, we want to implement in Delhi, here's the scheme, what to be doing, all the common twiffling. It's it's something we've, I personally feel very strongly about. Now, officers are very keen to do the head on. So that we have that package of measures, we can work with the county to say, and here's the next round of bids that we want to make to support the infrastructure across our district.
And thank you, Mr Hickman. Thank you, Councillor Todd, for introducing the paper. And we're now going to go to questions. And again, if we can just keep ourselves to questions and then make our comments in debate. I I know it's very difficult sometimes. Do we have anyone we'd like to speak, Councillor Williams?
Captain Brooke, I'd like to speak as well, if I may, and we'll say about that.
So, Councillor Brooke, you've kept Councillor Williams.
Thank you. You spotted me before I said that. So I'm going to try and be brief, but this does need a little bit of articulation to explain the question. So absolutely, we need a freight strategy. And I fully understand that. And that freight coming into the city certainly does generate large issues with emissions as well as air quality. And fully understood. If the petrol crisis and panic buying is towards nothing, it's that HGV drivers are in a premium. And I was reading some case studies about why there are so few people coming or towards being HGV drivers or leaving. And there were some really interesting points made by some of the drivers themselves, saying they left because they're the bad guys. They're the ones everyone wants to get on the motorway. They come into the cities and everyone wants them out. They stopped to do deliveries on poorly planned developments where there was no account of deliveries for shops. And they're blocking the roads. So everybody just wants them out of the way. And how bloody awful it is for them to just always feel like the bad guy. There's fewer and fewer places for them to stop and to rest and to get food. Because nobody wants to encourage break rest stops. And so I just wondered if we could just, while we're thinking of our freight strategy, which of course we absolutely need one, just bear in mind the importance of the role that they also serve, just to try and get that balance right. So my question is, can we consider that from both angles, please?
And thank you, Councillor Brooke. And just an addition to your question, which would be, if we were to create a freight hub on the edge of the city, can we provide decent facilities for those HGV drivers? Because I know that one of their concerns is there's no one to watch and there's no one to get changed or eat. So I think it's a legitimate concern. I think we'd like to take that question to Hickman or Mr Todd, Councillor Todd, sorry.
I should also, then pass it to you. So as I say, as we talked about, it's been said, I mean, freight management is very, very difficult, particularly HGV management. I mean, Winchester's classic example of how difficult that is, the limited amount of space we've had. What we have, and the work we've been doing around the square in terms of stopping through traffic chemistry there and closing the weekends has proved out how much time and effort that takes. So to understand freight deliveries and these businesses and these individuals, it's very complex waste collection as well. It's been really rich. It's taken an awful lot of time to do that. But we've worked a pretty good model, I think, in terms of how that can be done, in terms of the engagement to get to that point. So we can work on, we can work from that and learn from that in terms of it forward. And I think some of the points you've raised are probably issues for the County Council and the Highway Agency in terms of what they do on the strategic road network and the road services and things. But Hamptree Peak also a good opportunity to raise safe issues.
Thank you, Mr Hickman. Did you want to add anything, Councillor Todd?
Yeah. The the one thing I was going to add, so the the project we've mainly been talking about is what's called micro consolidation. So that's taking fairly small parcels and consolidating data on the edge of the city and then delivering it with zero carbon bins from that point onwards. I know that solo transport is part of their future transport sandwich, somewhat to our surprise, we discovered we were part of. But that's great. That's how we've ended up with the station project. And looking at macro consolidation as well. So they are looking at quite big strategic questions of freight. It also feels like it would be a conversation to have at the service station. And possibly even consideration of a local plan, in terms of saying, do we have the right facilities within the district? And to be honest, I don't know if we ever talked to the service station, whether we consider them as part of the highway network and not a local facility, but they are a local facility. And that would be a place to be having a conversation.
Thank you, Councillor Todd. Some interesting perspectives there. Councillor Williams, you go next to us.
Yes. Again, I'll mention fuel crisis. One of the questions I want to know, there've been, I've seen there've been an increased demand in people registering interest in electric cars. As a district, I know we have quite a high take up of EVs. And I know that we've been implementing and putting in more EV charging. But what I wondered, if our projections to the future are actually going to be realistic with the growth of EVs that we're hoping to see. So I know we've put stuff in, but do we have a plan that continues to project and allow so owning EVs is realistic, not just for people like myself who are lucky enough to have a driveway and therefore I can charge very easily, but for those homeowners who actually make up a third of car users are people who live and park on the street. So.
Yes, our strategy does take that into account. And that's why we're we're putting in a limited number at the moment, based on the demand there is at the moment, and then increasing that over time. And the County Council are reflecting that in the work they're doing by putting electric charge points on the streets as well for people who don't have driveways, for example. So yes, that that is very much built in. And we'll see what the take up is in community areas in which we can enhance that if we need to. And we're building in in extra capacity as well in some of the projects that we're working on. So we can expand that, for example, at the leisure centre. We've got additional capacity there if we need to expand it in the future.
And Councillor Westwood, you're next.
But you, Chair. This is a question about resources, actually. So in in the paper, you, that is, you recently employed a transport planner, which is great, and you you wanted an additional resource to help with sustainable travel projects. But when you talked about the square, you talked about the time and effort involved. And as transport is such a large area of our carbon footprint to address, is that sufficient resources to be able to drive the variety of projects at citywide and district wide and liaise with Hampshire County Council and consult everything else we need to do to drive this 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 area forward?
That's a very difficult question to ask, especially with Richard's answer at the end of the hearing. I was looking at you, but I think I might get an answer. You can never have enough resources to do this sort of work. But we've got to work with with what we've got, I think, which is what we're doing. But particularly working alongside the County Council, who do have some bigger needs. I think that's where we we need to work. And working alongside Stephen and Steve as well to do this work. So we we do have much better level of resource and community effects forward. And I think we just have to to monitor it as we go.
Did you want to add anything, Mr Westwood?
I probably recognise the pressure of the of the work area that the term is leading. When we did agree the budget in February, we did agree a new a new poster, that certainly the new post had been very sensitive. But so we're making what contribution we can, but we recognise difficulties of that.
I also think that it should be noted that that systemic transport officer is coming out of the Carbon Neutrality Budget. It was specifically set aside to allow us to try and meet ambitious targets of Carbon Neutrality Budget 2030. Just a supplementary question for me and Mr Hickman. One of the criticisms of this paper that I've heard voiced to me is that it doesn't actually measure the carbon impact of the interventions. I know work is being done by the county. But where we have control over certain measures, whether they're parking, parking levies, changing the use of comparts, et cetera. How much will that sustainable transport officer be in position to actually evaluate the carbon impact of those initiatives? Or will that sit with the leaders team or is that out with our expertise to do that? Thank you.
It probably sits across both teams. We've got to draw on the expertise that we've got, because this is quite a new area, as Mr Hobbs talked about, and and working on the expertise of the County Council to do this. And as as we said at the beginning, when the when the movement strategy was first envisaged, it was based on carbon reduction, it was based on air quality improvements and improving personal health and and that sort of thing. It's a different focus. But we fully understand that we've got to do this and we've got to prioritize work based on on carbon emissions. But it's something we've got to get smarter at, we've got to do. So I'll be working with Steve T. Steve, am I going to say something about?
The other thing I just wanted to add is I think I think the conclusion we've definitely come to is one of the things we need to do is get smarter at including that in the brief when we bring consultants to do work, not just in transport, but another piece of work as well. So rather than almost treat the the carbon metrics of of these things as a separate standalone piece of work that we look at separately, when we engage consultants to develop a piece of work on issue, they they look at the cost and quality elements, but we need to ask them to include some really good information on carbon metrics around these things as well. So we almost embed that within within our sort of our consulting briefs.
I would almost suggest that as a councillor, we should have carbon impact, and that's when all this all quality, given our determination and our commitment. And perhaps I'm speaking out of turn, Councillor Todd?
No, I I think that's a very good point. And I think, for example, on the question of partnership, I mean, you know, it's not for me to advise this committee. I do think it is worth looking at. you know, it's not for me to advise this committee. I do think it is worth looking at the carbon tools that the county are putting in place. Certainly from our point of view, we are very interested in looking at the transport related tools. But I think it will be helpful, if we can, to be talking a similar language and thinking in a similar way, assuming we believe it's robust. Um, in terms of how we assess the carbon impact of things. You know, I think that, that the county is about to publish its carbon report and has been doing a lot of work on its carbon plan. And I do, what we find is in the area of transport is when we get it right, one plus one equals three. I think we need to have more one plus one equals three conversations with the county, particularly on the question of carbon. They also declare a climate emergency. They're looking at it very seriously as well, letting us slide a bit away to us. And I do genuinely think if we can make our work complementary and work together, that would be better for both parties.
Um, and indeed, from the green economic development strategy, it was just, it was end of business and housing. That point about climate of working for a greater impact was an important, important element from my reading of that report. Um, Councilor Williams. Um, Councilor Cook?
Thank you so much, Chair. Um, I'd like to draw attention to page thirty-three. It refers to new council, new homes that um, include EV charging points now. So I want to know, with all new developments that are, they come to planning, the planning committee, whether it be one home or a, a number of homes being built, why can it not be mandatory for this council to say to that developer, from this day forward, every house that is built has to have an electric charging point? I appreciate what um, Councilor Williams was saying about um, on street parking. You know, and if you have got a driveway, you're very fortunate. But I'm talking about all new buildings. Could that not be mandatory from Winston City Council? Thank you.
I'm not sure who wants to take that. In many ways, it's perhaps a local plan question. Um, Councilor Todd, you were waiting, but Mr Hickman was nodding.
I, I think that's a very good point. Um, I, I have been writing my things I would like to see in the next local plan based on the fact that we don't always have the local plan levers that we need a planning committee to get things. And I would advise all councillors to do that so that, you know, when you get an idea and you think, God, I wish we could tell people to do that. I wish we could make that part of planning. It's, it's worth writing down, getting it into Mr Fox. You know, and, and making sure that we're capturing all these ideas. Because certainly on transport, I know, you know, things like, for example, connectivity, making sure sites are walkable, making sure that they're for us, that we're encouraging walking and cycling, encouraging bike storage. You know, all of those kind of things, we need to be thinking about now. We need to be getting them into local policy as quickly as we can. And I, I was, you know, I think if we're all saying it, it will really help. Um, I think, you know, the, the question on whether we can do it under current planning policy is a different one. Fortunately, not one. I don't think people present to follow by to us.
As Councilor Murphy, I believe so, you, you braced a finger.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm just to say, we read cabinet in either October, November, our air quality supplementary planning document. And then for all new builds in the air quality dungeon area, we'll be requiring them to have electric vehicle charging points and bicycle storage.
Um, thank you, Councilor Murphy. That's a definitely a good advancement. Who is next, Councilor Williams? Councilor Tivik.
Thank you, Chair. Um, just picking up on something that was typically said about this, the square, which I think yourself and Councilor Todd deserve tremendous credit for, is an excellent scheme, uh, which thousands of people have enjoyed and do enjoy really break the economy, clearly has carbon benefits as well. Um, are there any other schemes? I mean, I know you said you created a, effectively you found the, the pathway to achieve that scheme. Knowing that now, is there any sort of other sort of opportunities in that, in that, in all that dimension in the city?
There probably are, yes. Um, I think, I think the active travel fund schemes that County Council are pursuing as well are really important and will also put some objectives. But we can certainly have a look at that if, if members have got ideas of similar areas that where we could do things like this. Like, I can't think of any off the top of my head that we haven't tried to support already, but if there are, we're certainly.
Um, Councilor Cromer, thank you for reading.
Thank you, Chair. Um, as, as I recall, Hampshire is targeting twenty fifty as its date for carbon neutrality. Whereas, as I understand it, the target for Winchester City Council is twenty thirty. Um, it's also possible from the earlier analysis that Winchester may have a slightly higher concentration of carbon in its transport um, than other parts of Hampshire. So how do we propose to bridge that gap? The date cap, bearing in mind also there's an additional concentration.
Councilor Todd, do you want to?
I'll, I'll have a go at that. Um, yeah, and, and, and speaking as somebody who is actively involved in both councils to declare a climate emergency and to set a date of the net zero. To be fair to Hampshire, um, which, which does always come easy, but I will be fair to Hampshire. They, they are very clear with their twenty fifty target, that it's very firmly targeted, they are trying to beat. So they very much frame everything they're doing in policy terms as, you know, it's sort of twenty fifty at the very latest. But I think actually, Mr Hobbs was sharing some information earlier, which made it clear that, you know, they're, they're, they recognised the real urgency of the change. Um, and, and certainly on highways, I know the, the mindset of the people involved, whether officers or cabinet members, is very much, you know, the, the need to go faster if it's all possible. Um, ultimately, if we know what building blocks are, assuming they're not, you know, dependent on fantastic technology that doesn't exist, there is always going to be the option to go faster. Um, and I think that will have to be the way, where that will be the tension that may need to be resolved. I think the ambition to move more quickly is an important one. Um, I, I think this point also about the different car programme ownership, I mean, it was, it was, we did read and go through all the points in the winner list. Um, I don't think, I don't really have time to answer all of them. I'm happy to talk about it separately about each of them. But, you know, one of the points that was made in there was um, just increase all the permits dramatically, you know, that was, that was broadly the proposal. I think we would come from a slightly different point of view, which is actually, I, I'm on the record of having described the, the car park permit as a parking politics. Um, it actually matters more to have a clean slate. Um, so that we're thinking about lots of people might need one car. But saying, oh, well, it's just all increasing, saying is not the way forward. I think the discussion needs to be to say, well, what's the second one? What's the third one? What's the fourth one? Are we even looking at places of reducing the number of permits? Difficult that that might be. Um, so, so I think there will be tailoring that we need to think about in terms of how we design our, our parking charges, how we design our on-street charges to, to sort of do it in smart ways. Um, so for example, another example is we know for air quality reasons, we don't, even though we strongly support electric vehicles, we don't want them driving into the air policy management area because they still produce particulates, dust and other such things. You know, they're no more than any other type of vehicle. Um, we want them to stop on the edge of track town and come in, but actually cars that are in the air policy management area. We, we have more freedom to think about, well, actually we incentivise those cars to be on the car. Um, you know, so we, we will need, we need to be locally smart in terms of how we think through our policies and make sure that we're trying to meet the various objectives that we have.
Um, Councilor Todd, can I just ask with the parking access strategy? Um, is there any intention to review that parking access strategy, bring forward a, you know, a revised strategy in the near future? Or given that you're talking about different ideas and different, different things that you could consider, when will we see that, if at all?
Um, I think that's a good question. I think there is a case for, for looking at doing a review of it. Um, I, I would need to talk to officers to find out whether we have the resource to do that. We're already changed versus what we originally put in there. So for example, one of the things in the air quality action plan uh, and in the um, uh, and in the movement strategy and carbon plan is to look more actively at how we differentially charge for um, uh, for more limited vehicles. And that wasn't something that we were looking at forward, it's something we're looking at very actively um, uh, for relatively quick implementation, if we're able to. Another area that we've realised that is very important, so, and there are real opportunities, actually a hunger for local businesses on this. So one of the areas that's occasionally controversial is the role of park and ride. Um, and what we say in our strategy is, all delivered in its broad sense, is we will reduce car parking in the centre. We don't say we will do this only by closing city, city council car parks. We say we will reduce car parking in the centre. There are two thousand four hundred private non-residential spaces in the centre of Winchester. There are more private non-residential spaces than there are city council car parking spaces. And for example, one of the conversations we're starting to have with local businesses, which there is some genuine enthusiasm for is, well, what would we need to offer you if you have a ride? For you to take your city centre car parking spaces out of commission and for you to be having your start park further out. That's one type of parking that we want to reduce. We've had issues in other places where we want to do things to improve walking and cycling, but there are so many cars on the street that we can't. And again, what Amsterdam does, and I'm, I'm, I've read the Amsterdam parking strategy because I'm that kind of person, apart from being committed to park and ride, is they look at alternatives which could include our car parks or getting cars off street when you want to be using streets for walking and cycling or for retail space or for other such things. So one of the questions, one of the ways that we may effectively reduce movement into the city for car parking is that we reduce on-street spaces, but the residents will still be able to park because we will use our car parks for that. And indeed, during the COVID pandemic, we had some areas, it's one of the consequences for more people working from home, but there was, there were real issues in terms of controlled parking zones where there just wasn't enough parking with all the people who we used to kind of manage it as people going off to work during the day and somehow it works. And so we were allowing people during the pandemic to use our car parks as a way of getting cars off the street and to resolve some of the pressures that we have there. So I think we need a, a more, you know, a three-part view in terms of how we use particularly park and ride to get, to ensure that people are still coming into our centre, that our centre continues to thrive. But that we are finding ways of reducing the movement, traffic pressure in the centre. So that can be on the street, it can be private non-residential parking, it can be, and it can be our car parks. And I, I can also tell you that we have set up a working group of parking team, property team and the um, the finance team to start looking at our car parks. You know, how would we see that? What are productive, useful uses that might have instead? And will we be able to, how would that phase it work and how would it work with our other car park provision in the city? So there's a lot of thinking to do, um, that we need to get right in a locally tailored way, that we're thinking through as well.
And um, Councilor Todd, um, can we assume that as part of that, that thinking, that working party, that they will be looking at the carbon impact of any changes and give them what we've been talking about soon?
Yes, although I think there's a bit of a tension there because the truth is, if somebody drives forty miles and we switch them to driving thirty-nine miles and then they get on a park and ride bus, we haven't actually made a huge difference. Uh, and ironically, one of the only forward-looking sources of funding that we look at as a way of funding buses, as you know, um, the county is under tremendous financial pressure and is planning to reduce its public transport spending by nine hundred thousand. At the same time, it's been to government's part of the bus back better programme to see if they can replace that or get more to invest in infrastructure. We made the decision because we're allowed to legally invert our parking revenue. We will look at using some of it to support bus service so that people can see the linkage between the two. Um, and ironically, that's, you know, one of the consequences we will need to think through how we continue to get revenue. If we kind of get too carried away, um, if, you know, at, at the moment, as we speak, city centre parking is subsidising park and ride. So even in a good year, I think we get, there's about a three hundred thousand pound gap between the two, which is paid for by city centre parking. So that is one of the questions we'll have because what we don't want to end up doing is saying, yeah, we're saving carbon, a little bit of carbon by closing city centre car parks. But by the way, we've had to cut the park and ride bus and full subsidy from all these new routes that we've reached and put in place. So we do need to make sure, I think, I think a full carbon analysis could lead to some unexpected conclusions as to what our priorities are and how we spend our limited funding in order to have the biggest bang for the buck in reducing carbon.
And thank you, Councilor Todd. Thank you. And Councilor Westwood, do we, do we have many more questions? Because I'm conscious we've been going for two hours and we want to go into debate. Um, okay, Councilor Westwood, yours.
Thank you, Chair. Um, when Mr Hobbs presented, he said this way, he specifically brings out active travel and local buses, a low-impact carbon um, reduction area. So you said, when you talked just now, I'd be questioning that, Councilor Todd, as well, you said you would prioritise work based on carbon emissions. Can I just get an assurance that that doesn't disadvantage the cycling, walking, infrastructure plans that we have?
No, it, it won't, um, because that's still, they still, that will still make an important contribution. Um, not only for carbon, but also for safety, for health and all the other benefits you get from it. So that will still go past.
But I think there's an important point there, which is, you know, we're not going to have carbon-only injectors. We know that walking and cycling has all kinds of advantages. Um, because it might lead to some unexpected conclusions which people actually did very supportive of.
Um, thank you.
That's fine, Councilor Todd. I just wanted to clarify the, the issue that we were getting at.
Great. Um, I'd like to move into debate then. Um, who would like to start us off? Do we have any to debate? And Councilor Tivik, thank you.
Um, just, just to say, I, I thought this, uh, winner paper was characteristically excellent and really liked the ambition of a lot of these ideas. Um, it is a climate emergency and these ideas frankly are trying to grapple with that. An emergency is what it says in the tin, very, very serious. Um, and looking at the paper, it says at paragraph two point one three, it is our interesting policy questions raised, but they present economic, social and physical challenges which cannot be answered immediately. And so this, I suppose, point of debate is as much as a challenge to um, my colleagues on the other side, I suppose, uh, 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 i- 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 on the council, that these sorts of changes need some degree of consensus and collaboration to achieve. So they don't become political hot potatoes where one party is saying one thing about the other and potentially misleading them about the intent of the actual policy. So for example, if we did try and increase um, residents on-street parking permits, wouldn't we get accused of increasing, uh, creating a stealth tax against people? When the reality was, we're trying to attack carbon emissions. Um, and so there is, I think, an important place for collaboration between both sides on, on these issues because the climate emergency transcends all politics.
Thank you, um, Councilor Tivik. It's a, a good point. And in fact, um, at the climate emergency forum, it is called, Councilor Murphy, that was held last night, the point was made that um, the public as, as well as politicians of different colours um, may need to also get behind and not criticise when the obvious intent is to reduce carbon. And sometimes you can have very vocal media, who have more of a platform to criticise. And those who actually support a measure don't come forward and don't show their support. And, and I believe Chris Holloway, who spoke for winner last night, said there was greater enthusiasm in the general population more than ever. He recommends climate emergency, they're not taking the words out of his mouth, masochist. Um, and actually want to see. And actually want to see change and was supported. And Councilor Cook, you wanted to contribute to the debate.
I did. Thank you, Councilor Tippaker, for raising collaboration. And I agree, I've long since thought that things are often twisted out of context for the purpose of political gain or misleading people. And so absolutely, collaboration is key to achieving real change and real difference, which at the end of it, all of us as elected officials came onto it to do. And my slight caveat there is the unintended consequences of things. So although the intention may well be to reduce carbon, the public genuinely will see, I've had to pay for that. So it's just the unintended consequences, that if there is a double consequence, we really need to be careful about who is actually footing the bill. And it's almost very clear on that, and we all agree that the unintended consequences are acceptable for our residents, that absolutely there will be collaboration.
And I just wanted to add something to here. I know often in meetings I sit in, members who represent our residents from assigning the city, often common that they rely on accounts because there isn't a public transport system, there aren't the bus services to actually get them into our centres. So I think the fact that we are commissioning this bus strategy work across the district is really, really valuable. And equally, you know, we have to recognise that in the Hampshire County Council cuts that they're having to consider, it is those rural services, those subsidies that are being cut. So we should always be cognizant of the fact that our district is geographically very, very broad. Councilor Westwood did want to come in to change.
I just wanted to respond to your point about public transport. For me, you don't need it, it would take you four hours of public transport to get to Winchester.
And Councilor Westwood?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to make some general comments on the paper, many of which have just been talked about, as it happens. But I think the paper would benefit from a wider view across the district and not be so city-centric in the way that we did it. I think it does need some measures and targets in there so you can relate what the impact and the outcome of these particular activities and the targets that you're aiming for. I do think you need in there some sort of trajectory to zero, so some time bound delivery or where you need to take yourself to achieve, you know, carbon zero by the dates that you're aiming for. To pick up on your points, Councilor Westwood, consultation, and Councilor Cook as well. Consultation, winning hearts, might be the absolute key to this. I think the paper would benefit from something around how we achieve that, that hearts of mind and winning over people's desire to go down this path. And also I think we ought to include something around the funding base, because it's all one good to put down the projects and so on, but funding, as we all know, is really difficult. And if that is lobbying, work with other organisations or other government departments or at the county level, then we should be very clear on how we believe we can actually deliver. So there's a variety of things that the paper would benefit from.
Councilor Westwood, thank you very much. And I believe Councilor Tippaker has another comment.
Oh, no, I was trying to get your attention, Chair. I'm going to have to potentially really babysit her fairly soon. So I'm not talking fast.
Okay, Councilor Tippaker, we are going as fast as we can. I think this would be a meaty session this evening. Councilor Cromoson, Councilor Cook, did you have any debate that you wanted to add? Or are we, are we done debating on this topic?
I think my comments have been covered by others, so leave it.
Comments have been covered, but collaboration and working together, music to my ears, as always. Thank you.
And thank you, councillors. So again, with this paper, I just wanted to thank officers in the cabinet member for economic recovery of our transport and preparing the paper and bringing it to us today. We know the percentage of district carbon emissions that come from transport. And I think this session tonight from both our public speakers, and we thank you, is to gather the skill for your contribution. So just highlighted how big the challenge is and also the urgency. It's clear that we are being challenged, the council, to act where we can. It's also clear that there is frustration, that while all the various studies are necessary as part of the movement strategy, we can just have studies and talking and what our residents perhaps want to see is some action and some change. And we were asked to comment on the recruitment of a sustainable transport officer. We welcome that and the strengthening of this transport team within the council. We've also noted the need to actually find metrics and K for the I's. And we've also welcomed, and we should acknowledge that work has progressed on the movement strategy. The strategic intent to address decarbonising transport is there, it appears at every level of government. But there is a mismatch between the pressing climate emergency and some of the dates on which these actions will be achieved. I think that the work that is going on will take us forward. But we should accept the challenge from both Winak and Friends of the Earth and other environmental groups who are calling for us to do as much as we can, as quickly as we can. And I believe that our officers and the cabinet member base for economic recovery and transport and our cabinet member for climate emergency also want to see as much done as quickly as it can be done. So I hope that it's been beneficial to have all comments and a roomful. I'd like to thank Lucy McKeever for being with us the whole time but not being called to speak. I'd also like to very much thank Mr Hobbs from Hampshire County Council for giving us that presentation and answering all of our questions. I think bringing this paper on a specific topic under the carbon neutrality plan has been beneficial because it has allowed us to dig deep into this. And at our next committee meeting under the carbon neutrality programme, I believe we'll be looking at energy generation and again, we will be digging deep into that topic. So thank you, everybody. I would like to propose, Mrs Graham, that we take a five-minute comfort break because we've been going for two and two and a quarter hours. And so if we could just have a comfort break issue for five minutes and we'll be back at five to nine for those who are staying virtually.